To start with Leslie Vernon Donegan. Leslie is a master candidate, master's degree candidate at Cal State Sacramento in psychology as part of Doc Dr. Zach Schutzen's. Psychology of Gender and Sexuality Lab. They have a BA in Psychology from Cal State Sacramento where they focused on quantitative psychology and research methodology. Uh, they have an interest in equity and social issues. An excuse me, an interest in equity and social issues led Leslie to graduate school. Broadly, their research interests are related to beliefs about identity, intersectionality, and structural forms of prejudice. Their graduate research examines ontological beliefs about identity categories and their relationship to real world social issues. Specifically perceptions of anti-racist education in the United States. Please welcome Leslie. Christian Reyes is a fourth year child development major with minors in ethnic studies, equity and education and queer studies. He serves as the ASI Associated Students Inc. Liaison for OU Office of University Diversity and Inclusion. Where he works on bringing O U D I updates to associated students as well as ASI updates to O U D I. He's, he also assists with HSI work. Where O U D I has worked on initiating and strengthening Cal Poly San Luis Obispo's status as an HSI. Outside of O U D I, he serves on the sec- serves as a Secretary of Diversity and Inclusion. On Associated Students Inc.'s Executive Cabinet and is the Chair of the College of Liberal Studies Student Diversity Committee. He is also affiliated with Lambda Theta Phi Latin Fraternity, a Student Ambassador Fellow for Today's Students Coalition, and a Fierce Fellow with the Education Trust West. Please welcome Christian. Christian and Leslie, can you come on camera, please? Oh, there you are. Okay. Uh, Laura, can we pull the slide deck down? There we go. Thank you both for joining us this afternoon. We're really excited to hear your experience. Um, the first thing we want to kick off with is majority of California State Universities. A system institutions are minority serving, Hispanic serving, or Asian Native American Pacific or. Pacific Islander serving institutions or some combination. In what ways do you see the CSU accurately serving these populations of students? Uh, I'll start with you, Christian.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off. Um, so as mentioned in my, a little um description of myself. I'm very involved in Cal Poly specifically in the Office of University Diversity and Inclusion. And I've also been very involved in the Hispanic Serving Institution Initiative, the where Cal Poly is working to receive that designation. And I think what I've seen implemented here at Cal Poly is um a lot of different services and interventions that they're providing. Like, for example, this year, they recently started the HSI Student Advisory Council. Where it's a council compiled of different student leaders from organizations that are talking about. What do we need from the university to ensure that we're going to succeed in our academic journey here? And we also have the HSI Mini Grant Program where people applied to receive funding for the projects. That would have a high impact. And for example, one of those was. Funding provided to have students to allow them the opportunity to co-create the first Latinx psychology course. We also have the campus housing department that received a grant. To be able to bus students from San Luis Obispo to Santa Maria to go to Viata supermarket to buy culturally. Relevant foods that would remind people of their home. So I think it's really services like this that are not only directly impacting students. But also those that are funding support for faculty that are wanting to support these students. And I think there's still a long way to go, but with these smaller interventions. They definitely make an impact and they're really helping students succeed.
Thank you, Christian. Now Leslie, I'm sure your perspective is slightly different, particularly as a graduate student.
Yeah, I would say one, the affiliation centers are um very helpful, like I know. Um, uh, Sac State, they sort of, they have the MLK Center. Um, and they are starting the a Black Honors College, which is the first of its kind um in the US and so. Um, there is this, uh, there is more conversation around how identity can be used as a resource. And like our culture and values can be used and can can community can be used as a resource. In education, especially in places where um academia where it was just. Predominantly not a place representative of under of minority individuals. Um, and uh, I would also say that like in graduate school, uh, like as I have. Cause I went to Sac State for my bachelor's, like. A lot of my classes looked very uh. Were had a primarily um minority individuals in the in my undergraduate classes. And it has gotten progressively a little wider as I have. Uh, as I have gone for further, but I would say that. There's also like an understanding of like that difference um in the faculty of like. Uh, of like specifically having conversations with me about like. Hey, like you are a black femme in academia, there's a lot of. Um, like people will expect you to do service work and all that stuff, like you can say no, you know, and like there's like. You're, you are not representative and like here are my, here are the few things that I navigated. Um, and supportive of my interest in social equity work. Um, and um, bringing my experience to um and like. Uh, allowing my, allowing me to use my own personal experience as like a resource. To like funding my research questions and stuff like that and using it as not necessarily saying that science is objective, but like. Actually thinking about like, what is it that you want to know based upon like your own experiences and you know, how do you objectively do that? So um, yeah, I think that was one of the big things. I think also they created a lot of initiatives. Like the Sally Casanova um Predoctoral Program. Um, there's a lot of initiatives around. Bringing in faculty of color um back and like hiring our, hiring the graduates of our program. Back uh into the school. And so I think that's very rough that. The people who went here know what needs to be done here and so they can connect to the students better.
Uh, I like that. That makes sense. So you have probably some wonderful things that are happening in your campuses. Now we're ready. Give us the, what ways can we improve? I'm gonna start with you, Leslie, again.
I can go first since Christian went first the last time. Um, so there's definitely some, um. Um, there are some things. That I think funding for uh programs um. Are like the, the choices of where funding goes um is problematic. Uh, to a extent. Um, I would also say that um. There like they increase, they, I believe, if I'm, if I'm remembering this correctly, that we've added an ethnic studies. Requirement into undergraduate education, but like. I didn't see that there was added money for the ethnic studies departments to um to like. And. There's no, there's no more money going into education that is. Collecting on different representation or like, you know. So it's, you're adding an extra burden without necessarily developing the courses. Related to these things. Um, so uh, yeah, and I would also say my experience is that a lot of students are uh, at least. I graduated in, in like in four years because like I was able to. Go to school full time. Most of the students that I knew were not able to do that. And so there and like. Funding wise, there is a, a thing that happens where as like financially is its own thing, but like. You need financial aid in order to go to school, but you can't. If you're supporting yourself, you can't go to school full time and then your funding gets docked. And so like. More avenues of like of support for like students would be helpful. Um, and. Like. I just think like, it's very hard to focus on school when your basic needs aren't taken care of. If you're worrying about where you're gonna live, if you're worrying about what, when you're gonna eat and like. There like studies have shown that like there is a increased amount of housing and food insecurity in California specifically. Um, and so a lot of students are like, and like coming out of COVID where like everyone was like suddenly in their home. Like there's so much that students are like balancing in their personal lives. Um, and with racial dynamics within this country and like. There is an added cultural stress happening. Um, and I feel like sometimes like this, like we don't talk about what's happening outside. And I, and people are very much like, oh, this class matters and not understand like. I might just be fatigued because I watched the news and I saw someone die on the TV that looks like me. And so I can't think about this assignment right now. Um, and um, a little more like I, like. Grace, I guess. I don't know. I, I'm rambling. I, my thoughts are not necessarily all the way for him.
It's alright, it's alright. Get it out, Christian.
Yeah, thank you for all of that, Leslie. I think um really resonating with the point of just affordability for college in general. Um, I'm a first generation student and to fund my education, I was fortunate enough to where the pandemic hit. And I was able to stay home and I worked for a year. And that's what's getting me through college, being a full-time student, but also working a forty hour week. Because I was able to do that, I'm able to pay for my own college. And even then, that money that I made wasn't enough to get me throughout the entirety of my education through as an undergrad. So in my time as an undergrad, I've been working two jobs part-time on top of being a full-time student. It's been very, very difficult and I also feel like there's not enough academic resources to support students who are first generation. Um, on top of the additional things that we done with higher education. There's also just that stress of, you know, I'm not only doing this for myself, but I'm also doing it for my family, for those people who poured into me. Um, and I think this is really terrifying because recently, as we saw this past year, the CSU Board of Trustees voted to. Do the tuition hike. So in a system that was built to be affordable, particularly to serve underrepresented. Black and Latinx students. It's getting more and more expensive and that's really, really disappointing to see. And I think also as a student of Colorado, predominantly white institution. Um, I have to find different affinity groups to feel like I'm fitting in. Which is why I got involved in next in other communities like Lambda Theta Phi Latin Fraternity. Um, and I think what I grapple a lot with is. My intersectional idea identities being queer, but also being Latino. And wanting to find something that fulfills that need. So going to the Latinx center. But that's not really for me because I feel like. I don't feel comfortable there because I'm queer, but also going to queer spaces. Where it's predominantly white and not being able to find somebody that really resonates with my journey. So I think we can do a much better job at supporting our diverse student body.
As I was saying earlier, we just, we just had a uh summit on LGBTQIA2S plus. A symposium and it was the same kind of sentiment. Folks don't feel at home in either space, right? Leslie, what were you gonna say?
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please.
Uh, I just remembered this. Um, one of the things that um I realized. Uh, was this hidden curriculum in academia. A lot of. California State students um are first gen and like have this idea of like. And, and some of them are like, I wanna, I wanna be an academic, right? Like that was my dream. I didn't know that in order to be a competitive. Like a competitive um participant for. A, a, a grad program, I needed research experience and how and like. How, and like how, and for me, I was fortunate that like. I, someone that I was interested in. Told me you need research experience and introduced me to the department chair and the department chair was like, you should do. The McNair Program and I was like, what is this? And there was no like. And as far like I have been at Sac State for now. Five years. I've never seen an email about the McNair Program. Um, and it is a great program, especially for underrepresented students. I feel like there are resources, but they are so like you have to like know the secret code in order to get to it. And I think like that is harmful because like, like. A resource that cannot be used is still inas- inaccessible. And promoting inequity. Um, and so like that it, that is one of the big things and like. Um, having more conversation like. Having uh, having more conversations about how much of our campuses are first gen. And like don't know these things. Um. That like when a professor says, come visit me at my office hours, like cultural differences in how. Um, appro- approaching a professor works, like answering questions and clock, like all of those things. Like, um, yeah, so that's.
Absolutely. And I would say that many of our continuing generation students also don't know either. Because the experiences of their parents is so far removed from their own experience of educating folks. About, about how higher ed works. Particularly the CSU, I've, I've been in higher ed for a long time. The CSU is different from other places that I've worked. Um, Leslie, speaking of the, and Christian, speaking of the McNair Program, that's an academic program. I want to turn the, the. The attention to the classroom and to the academic portion of your journeys. I'm gonna start with Christian. What concerns do you have with regard to equity in the classroom?
Yeah, I know earlier I just touched on affordability and that's just for like room board tuition. But also stepping into the classroom, um, where. I enroll in the class and the professor is like. Good job, you enrolled in the class. Now it's time for you to purchase this one hundred and fifty dollar book. Hopefully you'll have it by the beginning of classes next week. Um. That's always really, really difficult to come uh to just think about, um especially. For those students who live paycheck to paycheck. Um, they're working to be able to pay their rent. And that's usually the top of their worries. As Leslie mentioned earlier, they're working to. Pay their rent. They're worrying about what they're gonna have for dinner later. Students don't have time to think about, how am I going to afford this textbook? But unfortunately, we're put in that situation where we have to think about it because it's not equitable within the classroom. But also in regard to what's happening within the classroom. I think also just the implementation of things and materials that are culturally relevant. Um, I know I didn't really find a passion in education until I was able to find something that I resonated with in the curriculum. Um, and that was through taking an ethnic studies class, learning more about Chicanix and Latinx history. Um, and also um, I switched majors, so I'm now a child development major, but. Previously, I used to be a biology major and in being a biology major, it was. I would say a lot more stressful because there were exams. Um, I, as a first generation student came in and I. In high school, didn't worry about studying for exams because it just came naturally, but jumping to university. To the university, it felt really difficult in finding out, how do I prepare for this exam? Um, I didn't know how to study. Uh, my parents weren't able to teach me because they didn't know how. Um, so I had to turn to campus resources where even then the person that I was seeking help from. Was a person that I didn't really see myself in, which kind of created that barrier that didn't allow me to feel comfortable and just kind of like. Sit down and breathe to be in the moment, to be able to ensure that. I'm learning correctly, to be able to ensure that I'll be able to succeed in the classroom. So yeah, I think in terms of equity, we can prioritize affordable materials for students. And also ensuring that the material that we're providing for students is culturally relevant.
I'm gonna second what Christian said, one, the affordability aspect. Like spending two hundred dollars on a textbook that you're gonna use for a semester. And then you sell it back to the bookstore for seventy-five dollars, like it, it is, it's insane. Um, the amount and like. Uh, and so a movement to or open um educational resources is like very important. Um, also, um, understanding like. A accessibility for um disability as well, invisible disabilities. Um. I, I feel like um, sometimes. Like there are certain, certain things that should have trigger warnings in a class that like um. That don't have like, could not, I like not to. That sometimes you walk in and you're triggered by something that like obviously. Like is going to be difficult for someone. Um, like if you're talking about like, like. The sexual assault of people in war or something like that, like these things happen. But like you don't know who that might trigger in that moment and should and so. Understanding some, some of those things and also like the cultural like. As well as um, I think one of the biggest things that I feel like I needed. In school was just a, like a place. To like in the classroom, like I felt like. I, the microaggressions would happen, you know, of like someone, they bring up. A, a, a black psychologist and I'm supposed to know this person because they're black, right? Um, what are your thoughts about how minorities and, and, and. How to navigate those sorts of discomfort in the classroom could have been handled better. For me, you know, um, I, I know that like when I got to grad school, I had um a counselor. Who was a person of color who went through graduate school and was very helpful for me. Of like, you don't have to answer questions. You're not, you're not, you're not representative of everyone and you don't have to be better than everyone in order. To prove why you're here, you know, um, and acknowledging those feelings that I had that I felt like I couldn't say. Because I'm supposed to be grateful, you know, um. And like having people actually talk about like what my experience was like, I think. Representation is important, but also just acknowledgement, like, like. I don't know that representation matters as much as like acknowledgement of how difficult it is to be in these spaces sometimes and like what, like. I think it's more humanizing, the humanizing of faculty um is uh. Is like, there is a power dynamic and like uh shifting that a little bit. Um, to make it more collaborative, I think would be helpful.
That's an interesting way to put it. What would a collaborative space look like? I think this is sort of what Professor Fennel Smith was saying earlier. And even Professor Kwan this morning about liberatory education. What does it mean for an education to be liberatory and to free people? Um, converse, not conversely, so. There's the, the, the classroom and then there's the student experience, whether it be through advising, student involvement, Greek life. What would you say needs to change or um what would you see, how can these areas improve with regard to supporting equity on your campuses? Either of you, whoever feels that feels moved.
Oh, I will say that um. I, I like the affinity centers, however, there is um. I. I worry sometimes that like I, I like, I don't, like there, the access to them, right? Like. Um, if your affinity center is only open from like eight to three, like. Who has that, like who has. Only traditional students have access to that affinity center. If there's no weekend. If there are no weekend hours, if there are no late evening hours, um, if like in order to get. Um, advising, you have to come during from eight to five. So like some, some like, I, I'm not saying like. Uh, of course overturn the entire system, but like the like um. Like. The academic model within Sa- uh, within California needs to also acknowledge how many non-traditional students. Are coming and like getting and especially with the, with the tuition hike, more students are gonna be working. That means less students are going to be able to be on campus during eight to five because there are like. Limited hours when they're gonna be there, they're commuting, like all sorts of things. And so um. More flexibility and equity in like student life would be better. Um, you know, um. I think, I think that's one of the biggest things I, I, I would request is more flexibility and access. Like I remember, like I literally had to take a day off of work in order to go for math tutoring. Like that was a. It, and like it was needed because I had, like I, I, I was, I needed this tutoring. But like at the time, like I, I was working part-time and like my hours. Happened to be during the times when the math center was open and I couldn't, and so I literally had to take, choose between. Making money or getting help in my education and I, and that's not an uncommon thing that I hear.
Not uncommon. Um, you know, the, uh, we're at the point where the majority. Of CSU students in particular are non-traditional. So then at what point are they the traditional student now? Christian, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think in my experience. Um, something that can be better improved in regard to student services is intentionality behind. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative. I feel like diversity, equity and inclusion com- encompasses. Service to a diverse body of students, whether that be traditional, non-traditional students. Um, and I think I, I, I'm, I'm sure I've seen. The different departments that put on events that kind of seem like there, it's a blanket. Just to cover something and they're not really addressing the problem at its root. Um, and I think it's important that we're able to kind of have these student service departments report out. On statistics and what they're doing, the effectiveness of these programs. Cause I think a lot of the times when thinking about funding, um, that's always the go-to point. It's like, well, we're not seeing this. Being well-used or we're not seeing this be really effective for students. But how much funding is it receiving? How many students know about these services? So I think um, a lot more effort needs to be put into making sure that students are aware of resources and that they know how to use them. But also making sure that we can follow up to see how effective those resources are being so we can know where to put our money.
Ooh, Christian, you said, you said a whole word there now. We, we've been talking about ex- um, assessment and evaluation. In higher ed and the CSU a great deal lately, as we're dealing with some of the funding challenges. That many of our institutions are handling. So I think you're tapping on something there. Before I, we open it up to the questions from the, the um, the audience. I want to end on something maybe positive. Uh, what do you need from us to be successful? You've got a, you've got seventy-eight people in the room who work in higher education in some capacity. You are talking directly to us. What do you need from us to be successful?
I think this is so difficult because there's so much to say and so little that I can't think of. Um, but I think where I've found that I'm most successful is where I have an individual that's. Not only intentional, but they're also open with sharing their journey. I think I found mentorship in a lot of faculty of color and a lot of faculty that's. Been intentional about doing the work that they're doing, but also being able to serve the students that they pursued this field to do so. Um, and. I think for all of you, whether you be staff members, faculty members, administration. Just being able to connect with students, I think a lot of the times we see these faces, but we don't know who they are. So I think really being able to connect with students and ensuring that you are human and that. Um, being able to bring people into conversation to, to state. How you're wanting to go about things, but also how you can go about things to ensure that you're best serving your students.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yeah, um, I would say. My biggest thing is like, what are you doing it for? Like, like, education is to serve the student. Um, and that, um, and so. Just making connections with students, like I feel like the, the moments. That like I look back in my education and I go, this was, this, this changed things for me, whereas when, was when people. Like, like when I was struggling and someone was like, hey, are you okay? Like what, like what, like this is not, like your work has changed and like you, like you, like. And I, I realize you have a lot of students, it's, it's hard to give personalized attention to everyone, but like if there is a change in a student. Like just simply asking if you're okay, like sending an email, just like, hey, I noticed. You is a, could be the difference between someone dropping out and continuing. Um, and so, uh, at least it was in my case, um, and um. Understanding that not everyone understands the bureaucracy of education, that like. I needed to go on leave and I didn't know, I, 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 I thought I just had to leave school, like I, I thought like I had to. Like, all I knew was like I was gonna withdraw from my classes, I, I didn't know I could take incompletes. Nobody had told me that that was a possibility, you know, um, and so, um. Having that conversation, like someone, like being able, someone, I, I was like, I'm gonna drop out and they were like. Hey, let's talk about this, you have options, you know, um, and, um, yeah, so I think. That. Not just like that personal connection, but like understanding that you could be the change for a student. Um, by just simply like connecting to them as a person and understanding that they are a person before they are a student. And so, yeah.
Even if we are not student facing, like in my role, for some, if a student gets to me, something is going horribly wrong. But I deal with a lot of student cases and it's, it can be really easy to see them. As um not even pieces of paper anymore, ephemeral documents in a online system. And it's really having to slow down and take that time um to, to think about that whole student holistically is important. Thank you both for sharing your experiences, um, I'm gonna uh ask Professor Keisel, Keisel Fennel Smith. Mister Mario and yeah, Hiroto, Mr. Var to come on camera as well. And we're going to Davis, if you're back there, open it up to questions. To the community. And panelists, if you want to grab some water while we folks get their thoughts together. I know my, my heart is so full, just listening to you all and, and sharpening my praxis. While we wait for questions to come in, uh Professor Fennel, uh Fennel Smith, Keisel, when you said we ration. Oh Lord, let me just look it up because it just hit me in my chest and in my feelings. We ration access to the economy through education. I'm gonna sit with that for a while. And the CSU in particular, because I know we've got folks from across different systems, but the CSU is supposed to be the university for the people. How do we not do that? How do we live up to our values?
I wish I had answers, I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
But the, for me, I mean, I'm listening to students talking about the incredible financial struggle. Of trying to get through school, um, the comments about textbooks, your library should be providing textbooks. And your departments should have policies about not using um proprietary resources. I want to tell you that the publishers know how to make money and they sell textbooks to faculty. And I just, this is, uh, you know, I'm a librarian, so that's my thing. But we have to look at it and say, are we rationing access? Are we creating barriers? To make this harder for students to get through. One thing that I see is, are there, are there barriers in the curriculum that cost students time and money? Right? Are they able to get through their degrees or do we know that there are courses? That are keeping people, they run out their Pell Grants, they have nothing left, right? Then they're forced to borrow money or whatever. And quite frankly, nobody should be borrowing money, I mean, we need to find a fix for this. You know, we can't, we can't rely on the once-in-a-generation presidential decree that like wipes out student debt. Why are people having to borrow money to go to school? I, I really, I think that's something that we can all think hard about. All right, I'm gonna stop rambling, I'm sure other people have ideas.
Not rambling at all, it's, it's, it's complicated and how do we deal with state funding, the primary, primary. Use of state funding is what Medicare and kids to twelve schooling and then, and then it's whatever's left and we've got a housing crisis in California. How do we do this? Ray, any thoughts about that, that quote from Keisel about we are, we rationed access to the economy through education? Or anyone?
Yeah, I mean. It's a hard question, though, um, I mean, I mean, it's a, I should, it's a big question, uh, you know, um. You know, I, I mean, on one hand, I mean, the, the way I take it, that question is, you know, how many. Uh, myself included, but there, there, everyone has the knowledge, the, the number of first generation college students in our, on our college campuses. And, and that is certainly, you know, the pillar, at least with, with my family, my parents, of education being that access. Um, and, and, and just keep, continue to push that forward through and getting people in and out. Now, part of the edge, higher education system is in far, is also, they are part of the economy as well. So, you know, the, the resources that we are given, the resources that we regenerate. Also are our own barriers sometimes, uh, because of lack of resources or what have you. Um, state support, non-state support and so forth, um, but I guess, you know, that, that first act. You know, the way I took it is, is kind of what we were kind of talking about throughout the day. And it's really just that broader access and I'm listening to the students as well. And myself lacking those social and economic enclaves that make. Navigating through systems much easier than if you don't have access to it. Um, and, and that's all, for me, that's all part of that, that question, that's why it's, so it's a great question, it's a big question. Um, but, but yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, we, that's. Our, what we try to do, or at least many of us in higher education try to do, it's a reason why I chose higher education as a, as a profession. Have no regrets whatsoever, um, but it, but it is, it's, it's just, it's just a daunting task, I mean, we, you gotta write, I mean, the CSU system as a. Institution is a very large and complex institution. Um, but, so you know, we can make things move and change, but it's just, it's, it's, it's a system, it's our. It doesn't move as quick and as nimble as we sometimes would like.
Yeah, absolutely, oh, you just brought something to mind. Oh, we were talking about helping folks navigate systems, I think in student services. We are often helping students navigate systems and it is my life's work to not make the system so hard to navigate in the first place. We shouldn't have to have a whole separate syllabus to help students navigate a mess with, when we can do our best to clean up the mess. That would be great, that's hard, I've seen it, you know, I've seen some of that work done in other places, um. Just have to get to it. Uh, someone wrote, it's all business going to college, working at a college, trying to find a job either with or without a degree, I'm sorry. Uh, but these students are figuring out what the world is like, complicated, expensive and doesn't make sense and please realize that it's all intertwined. Yeah, okay, but where does that fit with the liberatory education and the mission of the CSU? Yes, the world is complicated and sometimes grotesque, but isn't our function? To, to, to not leave it that way as humans in the system?
I would just like to say that, uh, just to answer this statement that. Um, yes, the world is like that and, uh, and their bureaucracy is necessary for society. Like, they're going to be hoops you have to jump through, great, um, however, there doesn't need to be more than necessary and like what. The issue is, is like, they're to the point, like we have, the CSU pays. For access to journals, um, through the library, like since. There is no reason that professors should not be allowing students to use resources that are. Already provided by the university as course materials. And rather than purchasing something from outside the university that is potentially. Uh, uh, cost prohibitive for them taking a course. Um, and so to that point, like, yes, it's complicated, it doesn't need to be more complicated than it needs to be.
Yeah, I would say it doesn't need to exist, it, we can just do the work in a streamlined, streamlined way. Christian and then Keisel?
Yeah, I was gonna say, also, as mentioned earlier, higher education is intertwined with the larger problems of our society. The problems that students are facing on campuses are problems that individuals around the world are facing. And this is institutionalized, looking at how the system was built, the system is why cis hetero patriarchal. And it wasn't built for me, that's the queer Latino, it wasn't built for a lot of different individuals that don't fit this mold, so. As much as it is intertwined, these are institutional problems that are the problem. And it's not necessarily the students that are that problem, the students are just working their best, trying to get through it. With a system that wasn't built for them.
Right on, Keisel?
Uh, I understand the perspective of this is the world we have, but I live for the world we're trying to build. And one of the most inspirational things for me as an educator is to be around students who are. Seeing a different world, who are imagining the future that we are building. And not just satisfied with, okay, I have to fight my way through this bureaucracy so that I can get my piece of whatever it is. Right? I mean, yes, the world will go on and it will be what we make of it, so. We can choose, we can work for the future we care to build.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, I want to add to that also, you know, if we go back to the basic premise of why we're even having today's webinar. And, you know, although it's focused on segregation, I mean, the basic premise is access to education. And I, I get it, I mean, the, the point's well taken, it, it's the reality, it's very complex, trust me. Thirty years in, in my career and having a son, he's twenty-six and all that, it is complicated. So, I get that point, but I think to me, I go back on the access and. You know, to Christian's point, higher education wasn't designed for who is in higher education today in its diversity. It was designed for families who had the means to allow their children to go to. An educational institution for four years, not have to worry about anything and just think about what they're doing for the rest of their lives. I'm probably putting it pretty bluntly and pretty uh, uh simplistic. But my case in point in that is you look at today and we have remnants of that thought process. Federal regulations on SNAP, we have a huge issue that we try to tackle with basic needs. SNAP, so here's, here's the backwardness of sometimes on how we have to work through policies. We have to in California, because of CalFresh, we have to make an exception to the exception in SNAP. SNAP basically discounts all higher ed students as ineligible for SNAP. Because the assumption is they must have support somewhere, mainly parental, that they will get all their basic needs, so they don't need it while they're in higher ed. That is not the reality, so that's where the complications and the barriers for me sit. And what we're trying to alleviate to get all of this kind of level set.
And thank you, Ray, for, for taking it back up, right? Like sometimes what was happening like on my desk. Is impacted by so many other things that I can't even see, right? And so I'm so appreciating having the classroom perspective, the student perspective. The system perspective on what all this means. Um, someone asked, are there financial literacy workshops for students who receive financial aid? So we've moved away from financial literacy in higher education to financial wellness, because. Folks who don't have money don't need more training on how to not have money, what they need is more money. Or time to make more money so that they can go to school, so that's going back to what Leslie and Christian are saying about flexibility of our services so that they can make the money that they need. To do what they need to do in school, so we have really moved away from financial literacy. In higher education to financial wellness and figuring out how our campuses. And, and thinking about what Keisel was saying, academic libraries are supposed to provide certain resources so students aren't spending nine million dollars for books. Um, or using open access work or using the, the resources that we pay for, um. I know that there's some campuses that have programs where if there's a meeting that has extra food, there's an app where students can come grab the food. Um, so that it's not tossed out, so there's thinking about well, financial wellness as a campus strategy rather than individual students. We have so many stu-, my campus is al- almost thirty thousand undergraduates, um, we really have to think differently about how to serve those students. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about financial wellness. Um, on a different spa-, well, before I get to that, I want to just add someone's comment, I think that the, it's all business comes from a capitalist mindset. But we are trying to figure out how to dismantle this system to replace this so that these complications that create our reality are no longer there. Someone else asks, how do we advocate learning from equity programs like EOP or others to better serve our new majority students that. Do not unintentionally take away funding from those programs?
Yeah, so that's, that's a big question, you know, the, 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 the answer, you know, usually what campuses look at and EOP has been a longstanding. Um, successful program and, and I should have qualified that when I opened my comments, I did reference EOP. I started my career in AOP, so EOP is the reason why I chose to go into higher education because I was a paraprofessional in EOP as well, so my heart is. Very close to EOP, but it is, it has a longstanding practice and there are um initiatives that. Uh, that are successful, the question is scaling up. And scaling up is one, to what degree can you scale up without changing that student counselor and service provider ratio? As well as the appropriate number of dollars that go into it, so, you know, EOP is in fact a holistic advising system. And many times it's a high-touch system because of the needs that we're all talking about that students need, so. Uh, there are very much, very much uh lessons learned from EOP that we can all draw upon. Um, but also challenged with, it'll, it, it'll take some resources to get to have e- every single student who. Really should be in EOP to be in EOP. Um, it, it's definitely gonna drive some more resources needed into those programs, it's not one of those that can go from. You know, a two thousand student program with five counselors and all of a sudden you can go up to twenty thousand students with the same five counselors. It's, it's gonna, it's not gonna have that same effect that we're seeing in other advising. Um, uh, situations that, you know, because we are looking at the advising, the ratios of students, the number of contacts, that all matters. In regards to the students navigating through the system.
And I will say, when I, when I started working with the CSU Student Network is because I was complaining. I was the California Education Policy Fellow and I was just like, the CSU doesn't make sense to me, um, at all. And they said, okay, well, since you have all this mouth, come fix it. And one of the things that, uh, my project as a California Education Policy Fellow was looking at student equity plans. Uh, in the system and, and because the California Community Colleges have had them for thirty years and we're. We don't have a system-wide requirement to have equity plans, and so one of the things I find to this question about how do we. Advocate learning and how do we scale up is that we're not coordinating on our campuses, all these different interventions that support. Two thousand students here, five hundred students there, a thousand students there, and one ways we can think about doing that is. Are thinking about student success plans, student equity plans, making people actually responsible. Who is responsible for student success on your campus? Who was that person? Um, it's, it's very dispersed. So that I think no one has to take accountability when the numbers don't move. And so thinking about on your campuses, who can you talk to about pulling all these resources together so that we're not all going after the same grants? who can you talk to about pulling all these resources together so that we're not all going after the same grants? We're not all spending money on the same students. We're not all targeting the same students. How do we work together on a campus with a unified plan to move forward student success in a systematic, scalable way rather than we're, we're gonna put on our capes and save these thirty students?
Uh, I would just like to say that, like, one of the things about equity is that not everyone gets the same thing. They get what they need, not whatever, like, it's us, like, it's not like, just like a punch a ticket, everyone gets this thing. Um, and so that targeting resources to the people who need it, and it go- like, to me, this goes back to the affinity centers, right? Like, the, like, they're like, there are certain groups of people who can you be used as a cultural resource for that person, right? Um, and it and it comes back to the resources, like, if there was like a, like, if there was like a way to, like, search to show my campus has this resource for this kind of thing, rather than I need to talk to X person who knows about Y thing and they will pu- point me in the direction of this person who will send me an email, like, there's so much to jump through in order to get to the point where you can even find out about what you need. Like, a lot of students don't know. You don't know what you don't know, and especially for an institution that caters so much to first-gen students, a lot of them don't know what they could pretend, and so, like, back to what Christian said about, like, there, people are, were defunding programs because there's lack of use for them. The lack of use is that nobody knows about them, like, the, like, there's, like, you funded a program and then did no marketing. And so, like, to that point, I think before we can evaluate something like a, like, of like, expanding a program, like, make sure that we are using the programs that we have effectively for those students.
Absolutely. We have very relation, relationship-built campuses rather than supports that are systemic and scalable. So that goes to the point of what you're talking about. It's it's Betty Jean in one office that caught contacts Norma Sue in another office rather than it being systemic in a way that any student on that campus can be supported. We've got time for one more question. Kiesel, I see you've posted something. Do you want to share it? Okay. One more question. If not, I just want to thank, thank, thank our panelists, particularly our students. Um, we know that there's so many things that people are asking you to do and you've taken your time with us today. Um, thank you to Ray for, for working with the system to make this event happen. Um, this event does not happen without the Chancellor's Office. Um, Yahira had to leave because she, we're in the middle of registration, registration opened for us today, and she's reporting students. Kiesel's got faculty meetings. Everyone just took their time um, to to have this robust and authentic conversation. So thank you for bringing your whole selves today. Laura, can you put the slide deck up, please? As we close today, I hope that um, hearts are full. I want to thank Dr. Dewan Jackson from the Chancellors, the CSU System Chancellors Office for coordinating all of our efforts with the Chancellor's Office, the Chancellor's Office itself. Um, the people that you saw were Dr. Perez and Mr. Murillo today, but there's also folks in the background that you don't see, including Davis Ho, who was helping facilitate today, and all the other kind of folks who put, helped put this webinar together. Dr. Jane Lair from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, who found us, uh, Christian to talk with us today. The comms team at San Jose State and Cal State University Sacramento, um, excuse me, it should be Sacramento, who helped us prepare today. And then the Ed Insights and CSU's um, Student Success Network staff who really worked behind the scenes for like the back, almost a year to put this event together. I'm really grateful to all of you. We're all grateful to all of you. Some reminders, there is a post-event survey that will go out. It will come from Janine Cunningham and will say no reply email. We would love to have your feedback. We have some interesting changes happening potentially in the network. We want to get your feedback on them before we do that. If you love this work, um, we have a call for advisory board members that are getting ready to go out, so that we don't do this work alone. There are professional staff who work on the network. Then there's also our advisory board who guides our decisions, and we're gonna put out a call for that soon. And then the MLA Mental Leadership Academy application will be opening, um, an announcement will go out this semester and will will help you prepare to apply in the fall to think about what kind of project and team you want to put together to apply from MLA. So there's lots of opportunities to get involved. Um, we know it's a long day. Excuse me. We thank you for your time and attention with us today. Uh, we hope that um, this edified you and uh, have a great rest of your week. Oh, finally, um, there's some ways to keep in touch with us. Um, whether it's our website, where we have actually some of the written materials um, that come out of our convenings. Um, you can follow us on social media, you can write to us. You can even call us. I don't even know who answers that phone, but God bless them. Thank you.